...out of this. When I do emerge in a few minutes, I hope to earn, to the side of the center of applause, and roasting cheers for first, last, and get out.
Being said, the city moved forward to notify through a public notice printed on April fifteenth and April twenty-second in the Boston Globe. The process of notifying people of tonight's hearing issued a press release on April eighteenth, which will all be a part of the record, and moved to have national advertising in multichannel news and other publications beginning May fifth and ending on June second. City has also requested a waiver from the Massachusetts Cable Television Commission requesting a waiver of the sixty-day advertising period, national advertising period. The commission, the Mass Cable Television Commission has granted a thirty-day waiver, thus the period of running the advertising through June second. The city will seek applications through Monday, June second. That process reads as follows: "The city of Somerville, Massachusetts, will accept applications for a cable television license pursuant to the regulations established by the Massachusetts Community and Tenant Television Commission. Applicants may be filed at the address below until 5:00 p.m. on Monday, June second, 1997. Applications must be filed, must be filed on the Massachusetts C A T V Commission Form one hundred, and must be accompanied by a hundred-dollar nonrefundable filing fee payable to the city of Somerville. A copy of the application shall also be filed with the Massachusetts C A T V Commission. All applications received will be available for public inspection in the city clerk's office during the regular business hours and for reproduction at a reasonable fee. This is the only period during which applications may be filed, and it's noticed by Mayor Michael Capuano, Somerville City Hall, ninety-three Highland Avenue, Somerville, Massachusetts." That being said, I'll quickly go through some of the benchmarks. Today's, as I said, is a public hearing. We will continue the hearing, and the hearing will remain open through May sixth, which will receive public testimony from any person or interested party. The city will receive that and be sent to City Hall, to Communications Office from zero zero five. And attention to me, Paul Train. At the end of that period, the city will move forward notifying the Mass Cable Commission of the city's intention. We will receive, as stated earlier, the Form one hundreds on June second, and then various other guidelines will go through, through the summer months into the fall. We have final decisions will be made on franchising. That being said, I would like to open up testimony to anyone who wishes to speak, be advised that it's a public hearing, it's not a question and answer period. If someone wants to provide testimony relevant to cable television competition or anything related to those things, they can do so. Otherwise, I would ask people to put their comments in writing, and if anybody wants to extend written comments to us now, we'll accept them from tonight until May sixth. That being said, I'll open up the floor. If there are any public officials, usually there's a courtesy to allow them to speak first. I don't see any in the room. In that being the case, I'll open up the microphone to any interested parties to speak. And I ask that you please state your name and address for the record and sign the signing sheet. Any public testimony being offered? That being done, is that right?
Absolutely. I was just waiting to see if there was any others. Do you want me to go up there, Paul, or do you want me to stand right there?
If you could, if you don't mind.
My name is Scott Burnside. I'm Vice President of Government Regulatory Affairs for R C N Corporation, and we're delighted to be here in Somerville tonight, to, at this public hearing, to address you formally and officially with an application to be considered for a competitive local franchise to bring, excuse me, competitive video services, along with a number of other communications-based services to the city of Somerville. And I'd be happy to go into any level of detail which you'd like me to go into, or I can keep it very short and sweet. It's your call.
Well, I mean, it's, from the city's perspective, Scott, it's really up to you. If you want to elaborate, go right ahead. If you don't, I'm sure in the weeks ahead, you'll be variety of plenty of documentation. But clearly it's up to you.
Why don't I just give you then, your, give, for the record and for everyone here present, just a very quick overview of what and who R C N is and what we intend to do. As most of you know, the Communications Act of nineteen ninety-six calls for, among other things, competition in not just telephone services, but also in video services as well. And my company has a long historic background in both telephony and traditional cable television franchising, and obviously saw with the passage of that act, an opportunity to merge those technologies and offer them in a competitive package in markets such as Boston, New York, et cetera. And we've been working very hard with city officials throughout the Boston area to make that happen. We're most delighted to have formed back in, I think it was January or February, actually, I guess it was the very end of December, to be perfectly accurate, a joint venture with Boston Edison Corporation, who I think most of you have heard of. If you haven't, you probably haven't been in the Boston area very long, but obviously a very prominent utility, power utility, with lots of experience in delivering, building and delivering service. And interestingly enough, although maybe you all, some of you at least, don't see the relationship right now, the ability to build a network, whether it be for delivering power services or communication services, is kind of a, basically a common effort from a construction standpoint, and with the use and deployment of fiber optics, we will be able to build on their network, B Co.'s network, and deliver very quickly, I think, a quality of products and services and communications that we're very excited about. We will offer, as this process comes to an end, and we have a franchise granted, which I expect will be the end result of this effort, a full range of cable channel services, something in the neighborhood of a hundred and ten channels. We'll have a telephone product, both local and long-distance service, all merged into one provider. And that's essentially what was intended to happen when the Congress passed the Communications Act of ninety-six. And I think, if I can be so bold, we are at least one of the first, if not the first company to actually put that congressional intent into action. Now, I know that some of you here are concerned about how this happens and what happens to the public education and government channels, and how those services are provided, and if in fact we're required to provide them, and are we going to provide service throughout the community? Let me take those questions very quickly and anticipate them, and then if there's any follow-up to them, I'm happy to cover them for you. First of all, obviously, as a franchise holder, we will build a network that will serve the entire community. That goes without saying. That's part of holding a franchise, video, cable television franchise. We'll be required to provide exactly the same kind of public education and government service channels that you have now available to you. And in fact, without going into a great deal of detail, the presence of a new competitor or new entrant, I think bodes well for the public government channels, because it obviously creates a source of revenue that has not been here for present.
Do you want to come in?
I would.
Will come on in.
Paul, I think that's about as quick a run-through of what our business intent is and what we're required to do. If there are any questions, I'd be delighted to cover them with you, and I have a number of experts here from my company and from Boston Edison that can answer probably the tough questions that I'm either not prepared to answer or don't want to answer. But I think that if there are any questions here tonight, you will not have them unanswered. We're prepared.
Well, I think, Scott, from our point, our viewpoint, the city's viewpoint, that there is a process in place that will allow the city by the end of June or July to issue a written report that includes the specifications that the city will require in any cable franchise. I think the city's record on this is clear. I think it's something that's a matter of historical record and in terms of the franchise fees paid and commitment to paying access services. So I don't, at least in my mind, I don't think there's a mystery from our end about what we're going to ask for. I think there is a process, and then we will move forward with the company in asking for things that we traditionally ask for, and in support of access and support of various technologies that will bring Somerville into the twenty-first century. So from our end, I think there's a process which that will occur, and we look forward to reviewing your Form one hundreds and all the other relevant information down in your company, all your subsidiaries and your partnership with Boston Edison.
Well, we look forward to going through that, this work process with you and with the city of Somerville, and I might add that we're very appreciative and honored to be here and address you really as the first community. And I have learned the difference between cities and towns in the Boston area through trial and error mostly, but we're delighted to address the city of Somerville as really the first official presence of R C N seeking a franchise from a community in the Boston area.
Okay, just so members of the audience that are both here will be viewing this. The process from here will be that testimony can be received through Tuesday, May sixth at 5:00 p.m. That does not preclude any other provider from stepping forward in doing that. There are other providers that have shown an interest in Somerville, but that may or may not be ready to move forward at this time. But the process is open to them through May sixth, and then we'll move forward with any process. Clearly, R C N has shown an interest, and we will gladly move forward with them. And if any other providers come forward, we'll move forward with them. So with that, I will allow any other testimony to be heard, and if there is, please step forward and sign in and say your name and address and go from there. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Paul, I have a quick question. I'm not sure I want to say anything. Will there be a forum where, like, ordinary residents in the city can get some information? As I said to you before, I'm terrified by this, because I think I'm going to go through this cable TV, what I went through with the phone. And I'm, maybe I'm pre-technology generation, but I'm very dissatisfied with all this NineX and ten oh three two seven and all these things. And there's some need for education, I think, in the community, but what, is this not the forum, and then will there be forums for that?
Yeah, I mean, the entire process is a public one. That's why the opening of this process is tonight, in written testimony and public testimony we'll receive, as I said, through May sixth, and there are various benchmarks along the way. The city will issue a written report after a listening testimony tonight in setting specific standards that we want to get from any cable provider, and then from there inform the public it's what the city's position is in that. And this is not that much different from a refranchising process that was used in nineteen ninety-two.
So with this question and answer period, that's what I'm actually asking you?
Yeah, I mean, there's no, as there is no requirement to have this public hearing, I think it's probably in the city's interest at some point to hold an additional public hearing to say, this is what the city's position is. There is the written report. Explain it, and allow people to ask questions.
If I may say something, Peter Repstein, I'm outside counsel to the city. It is important to remember that while this particular company is a telephone company, what we're engaged in is the cable TV franchise process, all right? So, you know, there, I understand you have other concerns and, you know, everything that's happening, and that may be more appropriate for somebody in the Communications Office to answer for you, because again, this is pursuant to state law. It's simply a cable franchise process. Now, other telephone companies may come in, other companies may come in, the law may allow them to do other things as well, but that's beyond what, right now, the city is dealing with in this process. We're dealing with, say, this company is saying, we want to provide cable TV services to Somerville, and that's what we're starting with tonight, that process.
Is there any other interested parties that would like to step to the microphone and provide testimony? Seeing none, I will. You may state your name and residential address.
Mimi Graney, fifty-five Combs Avenue, Somerville. And I'm also the Executive Director of Somerville Community Access Television. I'm, as SCAT, we're also very supportive of competition in Somerville. And one question that came up, realizing that this, since NineX isn't here, I'm curious of whether NineX is going to be coming forward, but we can talk about that later. Just to introduce R C N to SCAT, we've been around since nineteen eighty-two. Now, we've got three hundred members, and we reach to, just to the households in Somerville that are currently on the Time Warner system. And we're the P of the P E and G with Paul Train's office running the educational and governmental channels. We produce seventy hours of programming each week in seven different languages, being a great resource to the immigrant community in Somerville, speaking Portuguese and Haitian and Spanish and Greek and Italian. We've got some program in Arabic and Hebrew and some other special programs. We have, a third of our money comes from the city, and then the other two-thirds are through fundraising. And the health of the city's negotiations with R C N, of course, are very important to us. Some of the key things that we'd be looking forward in how the city and R C N relate to one another, we'd be looking forward, SCAT remain on Channel Three on the R C N system, just like it is on the Time Warner system. The important thing of having been identified as Channel Three for at least the last fifteen years, and even closer to twenty-five years at this stage, so that we've been strongly identified with that channel, and we'd like to maintain that. We're also, I think, I recently did a survey of nonprofits in Somerville, and twenty-four different nonprofits responded, including the hospital, the Y, the scale, and I found that eighty-five percent of them said that technology was extremely or very important. But of those organizations, only four of them had websites. Less than half of them had ever heard of a broadband network. So clearly that there's a big discrepancy around information sharing. And I think this public hearing is one of the first steps towards opening up this system. But I think that for the public of Somerville to welcome some of these new technologies of a provider providing a telephone cable that clearly internet access and finding, making the most of a cable system, that we need to have the rest of the community going along with it. And I think if we can open up some of the public hearings, not necessarily to slow them down, because I think we all have vested interest in helping this negotiation go through smoothly and necessarily to stop that process, but to have some more public input and more public education around that, which I think is some point Jack was addressing. Because I think we all, our basic services have to do with training and equipment for people to use the community technology to communicate with one another. And it's exciting that R C N's coming in with both telephone and cable services, so that that's expanding into computer networks and cable television networks. We're looking forward to a whole new opening for us in terms of technology. You know, we've had a very good relationship with the city, that they've been very supportive, and they have publicly expressed their support for public access, and we're looking to ongoing close relationship with them. And we certainly hope that, at least I've gotten the sense, that R C N's open to going along to the SCAT's guidelines and looking for. SCAT has been a leader in terms of public access technology for, since it founded, we were the first cable access centers in the country. And it's exciting that R C N is coming in as a new provider, and the city opening it up to competition, that, you know, we're once again, it's a possibility for Somerville to be a leader in community technology, and looking at that as a national model, not only in terms of Somerville being out front to test this technology and look at new franchises, but it's an opportunity to be a role model in terms of how the community can be a part of that. And I'm looking forward to if we can have some more community dialogues to talk about how we might be able to look at that in new ways, not necessarily just in terms of a cable franchise, but look at it in terms of web access and computer access, and I know Paul's been working a lot in terms of education in the schools. And I think there's a lot of people in Somerville interested that have ideas that could contribute to this process. So I appreciate that you all came to convene this evening.
Yeah, I think it's important that I should point out that people that are here are part of the city's negotiating team. One person who isn't, Peter Repstein, is the outside counsel for the city, has been since nineteen ninety. George Wood is a member of the communications staff who participated in the last negotiating process with Time Warner. And one person who isn't available for tonight is Allison Mills, who will coordinate the negotiations with R C N as they move forward. I should also point out that there are other providers and other interested parties here. For us, John Conroy from Boston Edison is here as a partner with R C N, and also Jill Reddish from NineX Video Services is here as well. So, but it needs to be kept in mind that this is a cable franchising process, and only those companies interested in being a part of the cable franchising process are stepping forward. Companies like NineX may step forward either through franchising or the open video process in the months ahead, and that's something that the city will address at that time. With that, there is no other further public testimony. There is further public testimony. Why don't you state, state your name and your residential address, please?
My name is Al Rubiel. I live at five Tennyson Street, Somerville. I'm a member of the board of the Somerville Cambridge Elementary Services, a member of the SCAT board, have put on some programs through SCAT, and I would like to second some of the points that Mimi has made, not repeating them, but just saying that I support basically the position that she's expressing. I also want to explain, though, that I am talking from the, also the far side of high tech, and that I think that all of us, both the companies and the public and the city, have to take a moment to remember how some of the problems of the computers, when they were first introduced, the reaction that was among the public. I happen to have in my collection of books, a post-World War II book that tells about thinking machines, and they were going to be all ears and precision mechanisms, et cetera. And already vacuum tubes and computers were already being used in World War II, et cetera. And I'm mentioning it because in spite of all of that, the public has the feeling that computers resulted in a lot of layoffs and made it possible for some people to be very productive for a company, but it caused their daughters and sons to be laid off and not to share in the benefits, et cetera. Secondly, the, there were certain problems, health problems, et cetera, that came up. And I'm mentioning that because there are problems with community cable access that can be solved by having additional channels. And it isn't just to be able to put more time on the air and have more commercials necessarily, but it can serve as a very educational program and process for the entire community of all age groups. Specifically, I'm concerned that with Somerville being the center of an experiment, and the first in this whole operation, that there, I would hope there would be nothing go wrong that would make it more difficult, or that people in other towns or cities would hear of, that would make them feel, let's stay away from that, or let's stay away from this company or that company, et cetera. And so I feel that we need to all go forward with the concept of making this work in the greatest way possible. And I think that within this technology, there is soon going to be the opportunity for town meetings to be held over the air and, or through the cable, and for two-way communication that would be very important to get people's reaction. So that, for example, instead of this hearing being held here in this one room, it might be, in the future, be able to be broadcast to all the senior centers that will have big screens and to all other kinds of public buildings, and people in those neighborhoods too will be able to sit in and hear, and if need be, be able to participate under this technology. And so I think that we should all be working to try to have it succeed, and to succeed in a way that will be very positive in the public's image and overcome some of the fear of high tech that some people have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public testimony? Charlie? You may state your name and residential address.
My name's Charlie Tech. My address is thirty-three Spencer Avenue, Somerville. I've been a public access producer for the last twenty-one years, and has always been on Channel Three. And just a couple of points. The first one is that I think it's really unfortunate that there wasn't more publicity about the time and place of this meeting. I know, I appreciate that there were legal notices given. However, the people I talked to, no one knew that it was happening tonight, and there are obviously a lot of people that did want to, that did want to come. A lot of people were not able to come because they already had previous commitments. And I think any future hearings, there should be a story in the journal. As there was a week and a half ago, there could have been a notice, a part of that story, that there was going to be hearings tonight. Specifically, I want to make two points about what I think should happen in terms of SCAT and cable franchises. The first one is that we are facing a time of quite substantial technological change, as everyone is aware. And that means that the method of producing television programs, or what we now know as television programs, is going to change drastically in the next ten years, or whatever the term of franchise is liable to be. And for that reason, I think it's very important that in any franchise, it's granted that there be funds allocated to SCAT for the purchase of new equipment that will keep SCAT up to date and keep the membership able to produce programming in a way that is, maintains a contemporary quality with what else is going on in the television world, as well as the computer world. The other point I want to make is that I think it's very important for SCAT's funding to be provided directly by any company that has a franchise with the city. The reason for that is very simple. SCAT is a public access organization, and SCAT's job is to provide access to everyone in the community, anyone who wants access, to produce any kind of a program really that they want, any political inclination, any point of view, with certain obvious restrictions in terms of, you know, obscenity and that kind of stuff. In that process, there are always going to be disagreements. There are always going to be controversy. There are always going to be different points of view. And I think it's very important to insulate that process from the governing process at City Hall. As long as funding comes through City Hall, then City Hall basically could pull the plug at any time if they don't like what's going on on the cable. And I just feel that that is a very inappropriate arrangement, and in order to ensure continued free and open discussion that the cable hopes to provide for people, I think it's very important with that kind of arrangement. for people, I think it's very important that that kind of arrangement be instituted. And in fact, that is the kind of arrangement that existed in the prior franchise. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there any other public testimony? Can you state your name and your residential address, please?
My name is Amanda Salueras. I live at fifty-five Columbus Avenue in Somerville. I currently work with Somerville Cambridge Elder Services in a community outreach capacity. And I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Somerville Cambridge Elder Services. I also want to say that I have been a producer of programming on SCAT for the last three years. And I wanted to speak to something that Mimi Graney had said, because Somerville Cambridge Elder Services is one of the community organizations that perhaps could be more high-tech than it currently is. And the organization has been incredibly excited at having the capacity to produce its own programming, to reach out to elders that may not have been reached out, and to allow those elders themselves to take part in their own educational process and information sharing. So the organization would, you know, very much like to see SCAT and just the idea of community access continue. It's a time of incredible change, and we just want to be sure that the public is not cut out of access as we go into this, into this new era. The Somerville Producers Group, of which I am a member, has been producing shows for, since the inception of SCAT, or has been producing shows for twenty years. And it has been nationally recognized for a lot of the programming that it's done, as has SCAT, the organization. So I think that actually, we have an incredible opportunity to continue that, to continue being on the cutting edge, which is obviously what the city has expressed in terms of this laboratory with the franchising. So we'd like to see SCAT continue on Channel Three, and we would like to see SCAT have a contract with the franchise that comes into the community. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak? Can you state your name and your residential address?
Hi, Dale Patterson, seventy-three Oxford Street, Somerville. And I'm the planning director also at the Community Action Agency of Somerville, which is the anti-poverty agency for this city, legally designated and part of the law on poverty. And I want to testify on behalf of SCAT as an organization that I think has helped low-income people and other organizations that serve a lot of different people in this community bring some extra money in here. And I think that that's important, because there are times, I think, when the business community and the people who are here tonight, and there are a lot of people here tonight from SCAT, I'm a SCAT member too, but a lot of us, and it doesn't always seem like our interests dovetail, you know? Like, we're asking you for money, and you're saying, what's in it for us? And I think that when we can talk about an organization like SCAT, my agency's got, like, two and a half, two and a half million dollars from the feds. And a lot, a big part of that was because we were able to work with SCAT to document what we were doing, to have people making videotapes, to send them down to Washington so those GS tens could get their promotions to GS twelves. That's important stuff. And we need, we need the capacity to do that here. SCAT is a very important part of the capacity of this community to bring in money, also the educational channel, also the government channel, all three working together. I think that there are lots of ways, I mean, when we bring in two and a half million dollars and then some, it kind of helps to float some other boats in the community. And maybe this is a little simplistic to say that, you know, if we're helping low-income people, for example, make a little bit more money, and maybe they can buy a few more channels, that that's good for you. But I would like, I hope that there will be opportunities for us to talk about, you know, ways where our interests, you know, the people who are asking you for money and those of you who want to come in here to make money, really do dovetail, and how that can happen, that it will work very well for both of us. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Sure.
Yeah, well...
Hi, everybody.
Can you state your name and your residential address?
My name is Manuel Bonifacio. I live in fifty-three Francesca Avenue, Somerville. Good afternoon. I understand there is some competition of cable company into Somerville, and I think it's wonderful. But there is one thing, I'm a member of SCAT for nine years or more, and I produce three, four or five programs for the Portuguese community. It's a very important thing to do, to keep the community informed about things that's happening with my people and others. So I understand that all those cable companies that come to Somerville area want to make money to do their job, but also they have to understand that SCAT is an important thing to have. SCAT, it is an organization that works for the community. That's, that's the voice of the community. Anybody from the community can speak up through SCAT. We could not do that with your channels, but SCAT can do that. And I think it's very important to keep in your mind to have, to keep SCAT alive. And SCAT, unfortunately, survived today with very little, a little bit of money. Just come and look at SCAT and see the facilities, the machinery, the old. Unfortunately, our budget, our budget, sounds like I belong to SCAT, but I do, in some ways. The budget of SCAT is very low, is staff very limited. So I will ask for those that come to Somerville to compete with other cable companies to realize that you should do something a little extra to keep SCAT alive. If you go to Cambridge, CCTV has four different channels. In Somerville, we have only one. So let's not stop that one, but give a little bit more. And one of these days, just change to Channel Three and see what's going on, to see if it is worth it or not. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jim O'Toole, and I have to apologize starting right off because I'm technically not a resident of Somerville at the moment.
Well, why don't you state your residential address?
I live on Concord Avenue in Cambridge, and I'll be moving to fifteen Monroe Street in about a month, so I will be at Somerville soon. So, how do you do? The other thing I have to apologize for is that unlike most of the people I've heard test by so far, I'm also not a member of SCAT. But what I wanted to ask about was, I had a, I guess, a question that was going through my mind as I listened to the testimony by the gentleman, I think was from RCN. When I heard him describe his system, it sounded like a system that would, that he might ultimately want to use to deliver internet access to the residents of Somerville, which is something that I'd be extremely interested in, would be high-performance internet access. And so while I know this is a cable access hearing, I imagine that Somerville might be negotiating with RCN about properties of the RCN system that would have to do with how it delivered internet access. And also from my work, I know that cable TV is evolving right now, and SCAT's channels, just like the cable television companies' channels, might change to be not just things like Channel Three and Channel Four, but channels might be things like websites. And so I'd be interested in knowing whether RCN's business plans for cable access in Somerville include internet access, and whether if they did include internet access, would SCAT also be able to provide internet-based services to the residents of Somerville? And would the residents of Somerville be able to use that internet access to publish information to each other? So those are things I'm interested in hearing about from RCN, maybe not at this hearing, maybe at a later one, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I have absolutely no problem putting SCAT on the spot, but I'll just say that the city has a general interest in expanding the technology that's available to residents now, and that includes internet access. And when we issue a report, the issuing authority report, will address a lot of those issues. And again, that'll be open in a matter of public record, I think, so the, so the audience is aware. The city's record for public access and PEG access is a matter of record for going on six years. SCAT is the highest-funded public access group in Massachusetts. It received one point three million dollars over the last five years. I think PEG access will continue to get support, and I think we've said that as a matter of record. So I think, while we appreciate everybody stepping forward and speaking volumes about SCAT, we share your viewpoints about PEG access, and the city will, will put those words into action again as we did in nineteen ninety-two. But that being said, I want to put SCAT on the record about what it's going to do for internet access.
Well, it's a rare opportunity to deliver good news at meetings like this. And I apologize for eliminating in my brief comments the fact that internet access absolutely is already a part of our service offerings. So we're, we're in the internet access business. We have an internet access company called Epix that, that has been quite successful, and we have some real experience in that business. So yes, along with local and long-distance telephony, competitive local and long-distance telephony, and competitive video services, we will also offer a competitive internet access service. I'm not sure exactly what you have in mind when you talk about SCAT being in the internet access business itself, and then maybe something we can talk about at another time or when I understand more clearly exactly what you're talking about. But essentially, we are in the internet business. We will be delivering that product here as well as the other communications products.
Great, I'm glad to hear that. Thanks.
Let me just say again, that this public process is open through May sixth, so if you want to put your, reduce them to writing, your comments or questions, the city can gladly get those answered, and report back to you and to everybody else. Okay?
Great.
You might want to see Mimi about signing up to SCAT. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward? Just state your name and your residential address.
I'm Kate Snow. I'm not a resident of Somerville. I live at fifteen Fields Road in Arlington, and I'm also not a member of SCAT. However, I am the executive director of the Somerville Community Computing Center, which is governed by the Technology Education Council of Somerville, and certainly my, my ears perk up at the sound of internet access being provided in yet another way of community. We do provide community with public internet access. We provide public access to computers, which includes not only access to the computers, but training and assistance from volunteers and people who are both technically savvy and people savvy. We are one of the places where people with paranoias and phobias about computers come and change their lives, people of all ages, from three-year-olds who are learning their alphabet while they write and use the mouse, to ninety-three-year-olds who are just learning how to write letters and catch up with their grandchildren. I would like to go on the record as encouraging both RCN and the city to think broadly about this contract and to think about including, while public schools are almost universally included in conversations about delivering universal access, and libraries often fall into that category as well, community access centers like ours don't have an official standing in situations like this. And I would encourage the city, as we're talking about a cutting-edge situation, to think about including public access to the internet through an organization like ours as part of the contract or part of the negotiations or part of the conversation. We are one of about two hundred members of this community technology centers network, which is a national network of community computing centers, working closely with the Alliance for Community Media. We are the regional representative for that network, training new centers. We are an example to centers all over the world and have a national reputation in the way SCAT does in, in public access stations. So it's a real opportunity. If Somerville is going to be on the cutting edge in terms of cable telephony, internet, telecommunications access, there's even more of an opportunity here than I think has been floated before. And I want to make sure people know that we're here and that encourage participants to include conversation about real public access to the internet to experience provider in your conversations. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Fatima Martins, and I've spent my time between Cambridge and Somerville. I lived in Somerville for a quick fifteen years at thirty-seven Avon Street. And I do work with Manuel Bonifacio on issues that are of interest to the Portuguese community. And I had a meeting at seven thirty tonight, and when I got home, I had a message that SCAT was in jeopardy, and I said, what? So I'm not there, I'm here. I'm not sure that I understand what all the issues are, who's coming in and who's going out, that the bottom line should be SCAT should not be negotiable. I mean, it's, it's so necessary. We use it a lot. We have open line. If you ever listen to one of our open lines to the community, you would see how much it's used. Sometimes we can even get to all the calls. I do an authorization for citizenship on it. I teach on it and discuss. This is not a hobby that we do with SCAT. This is community service. And I want to be very clear about that, or I want to be very clear about that. We do community service with SCAT in conjunction with CCTV. I've been doing this for six years, starting in Cambridge. So whatever the issues are, I really hope and I agree with you that you work them out or that we work them out, because SCAT, in this, in this day and age of open communication and with community outreach, we need it. It's there, it's serving, it's being used. Okay, so again, whatever you're contemplating, whatever the issues are, I would say to you, let's work them out, because we need SCAT. Thank you.
My name is Edmund Denty. I live at twenty-eighth Denton Road. I'm the former president of the board of SCAT. I have a question about the procedure, Paul, you mentioned the next step is the presentation of criteria from the city to the company. And I was wondering, are these criteria working criteria? Are they criteria that were developed in response to the nineteen ninety-six Communications, Telecommunications Act? Are they new criteria in response to the city's declaration of competition? And is there a specific criterion addressing community access TV? And, or is that something that will be worked on later? And are these criteria open to, you know, general use? Or are they something that will simply be negotiated with over the next few days?
Well, I think, I think a lot of the things that happened during the process will be negotiated, as they were in nineteen ninety-two. However, I think we have made it clear to any provider that would step forward that the biggest aspect of what we're asking for is five percent of gross revenue, which is, as you, as most people in the room know, is where SCAT generates its money, a third of its money. So that being the case, that is something that in our eyes is not at risk. So I don't know, you know, the woman before you said SCAT is at risk, we don't see it that way. We see it as, we, we've made it very clear that we are insisting on five percent of gross revenue, as we did with Tufts University, a great employer, in their franchise with the city, for the same reason, that those twenty-two hundred students who reside in Somerville will now get cable television, pay a franchise fee, which the city distributes a third to SCAT. And so regardless of who the provider is, PEG access will be, will be a part of the picture. We'll do so with one thing, because, you know, we can all talk about technology, we can all talk about openness and internet access. It really comes down to one thing, none of it's possible without the funding. So rest assured that the city will be asking for five percent of gross revenue. And I think RCN's aware of that, I think other companies that are looking at Somerville know that. And I think it's an important point, the gentleman who spoke earlier talked about that nothing should be done in Somerville to hurt other communities. And I, we feel a great responsibility that Somerville is about to put forth a blueprint for all cities. We see it, remember, Somerville's the only city in the Commonwealth that collects five percent of gross revenue. SCAT is the highest-funded public access group in the state. That being said, those are the rules. If you want to come in and play in Somerville, that's what you have to pay. And we hope that by establishing that, the Cambridges and the Watertowns and the Springfield's have a blueprint to carry forth the PEG access across the state.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up quickly on that? The specifications for the city's issuing authority report, there is not a lot of information telling us where that comes from. The state regs simply say that the city puts together those specs, and those specs should be appropriate specs. So it's not based on the Ninety-Six Act alone or anything specific. This would be something that the city would gather information and basically put that report together.
Paul, I'd just like to make two brief comments. Generally... Generally, the input here has been very interesting from my perspective. I want to make first the point that when the Communications Act was being debated in Congress, your own poultry and others like them throughout the country were very, very diligently to ensure that the funding mechanisms for public education and government channels would in no way be threatened by competition. In fact, that effort alone probably added at least a year, and if you don't believe me, go ask Ed Markey, probably at least a year to the ultimate and final passage of that act, while those very issues were being debated. And I think that there is ample protection built in to the federal act to ensure that in fact, these kinds of concerns that you have are protected. The second thing, and more importantly from my perspective, I want to tell you very briefly that in case you're doing the math and listening to what Paul said, we, like any other potential entrant of a competitive, bringing a competitive service to this market as a new entrant, will provide or pay 5% of our gross video revenue to the city. But your first reaction is probably, "Well, that's no big deal, because if RCN adds a new customer, then the existing cable franchise holder loses a new customer, and the city is only even in that deal." And I want to explain something very quickly to you from our own business experience. When we have competing cable operators, and we operate, as RCN, we operate one of the nation's largest competitive cable overbuilds in this country, and the first thing that happens when competing cable operators vie for business is the pie gets bigger. The national average for cable penetration is about 60, 61 or 62%, and I think that in the city of Somerville, that's about where you are right now, about 62% of your residents who, 62% take cable, those that can. That will almost guarantee growth as competition comes to the marketplace. Prices go down clearly, and service goes up. That's a function of the marketplace, and I can assure you that there is nothing that we've seen in Somerville or any of the other communities in the Boston market that would lead us to believe otherwise, same thing will happen here. So, I can't promise exactly what, but if you do your math, and we give you 5% of our gross revenue, and as a new entrant cause the total market to grow by some measurable amount, then I think that you ought to feel good about the fact that your public education and government channels will in fact, just by that fact alone, see a larger contribution.
I'm Ted Kepler, and I'm Pastor of the Clarendonville Presbyterian Church at 155 Powerhouse Boulevard, and also Vice President of SCAT, and I will be very brief. All I want to say is thank you for your assurance that PEG access will continue. It has meant a great deal to the religious community and to its diversity, as we've been able to do programming from the Jewish and Christian and Muslim and Baha'i perspectives. And so, we're very grateful to have access to this cable. I also would like to say, being a neophyte about technology, that as we move closer and closer to Internet access and to the merger of cable and Internet facilities, that the access principles that apply to cable will also apply to Internet systems as well. But, thank you.
There any other test marks? Representative Gill?
I'm Pat Jalen, 67 Jane Street. I came because I'm a producer, and also because all of my three children have become producers thanks to SCAT, and I've known a lot of people who've gone on to get jobs because of their experiences at SCAT. It's a very important part of our community, and I'm very, very happy to hear that you're committing to keeping that same relationship. But I had a couple of sort of related questions, which is I hope that all of the cable companies that come into Somerville will carry the same channels, not all the same channels, but SCAT. I think that's very important, that they not be allowed not to have that channel, because I think there's very little in our community that brings us all together. So, I would like to see SCAT be part of the basic service of all programs, and that there be a clear written understanding that it's going to be SCAT as an independent agency that is the third leg of the stool, because as you know, it's hard. City Hall doesn't want to be responsible, I'm sure, for all the things that go on at SCAT, but at the same time, it's important that there be an independent place for people to get together and have their voices heard. Certainly, I wouldn't have a show if it weren't for SCAT, because there wasn't room on the government channel. So, I appreciate your commitment to SCAT, and I think it'll be great if we can win all three companies.
Do you know why if I add something? Sorry.
Which would be fashion for you to carry on.
No, no, just one more thing, because I've been listening here, 5% for SCAT, and it's very nice. However, we are, even in 5%, I know that SCAT really do have a lot of problems of carry on with the expenses, and I know pretty soon we're going to confront a new era, new machines into the market, and updating the machinery that SCAT has, is any possibility that you guys have any thought about helping SCAT in updating the equipment, or give a little bit extra to improve the, you know, their programs? Because I, sometimes I get confused, I come, Cambridge has, Cambridge is bigger than Somerville, but I wouldn't say it's twice as big as Somerville, and they do have four different channels, okay? Four different access channels, and Somerville only has one, which used to have two, but they gave back to the city of Somerville, that's fine. But I feel that SCAT with only one channel, and the money that, I know, because they workers, they're very limited of workers in their office, so I'm just putting a question mark, is any possibility you could, 5.5? Just be your shape, something to be in your mind. I'm a member of SCAT, produce, and I wish they could get a little bit reward than they've been up to now. Thank you.
Manuel, I'll just address that from the city side, to say that the intent of the city has been throughout the evolution of the Telecommunications Act, we've provided testimony, we tried to position the city to say that two things can exist simultaneously, PEG access and competition. The end result of that is, the PEG services are still here, they may get expanded, but lower rates for consumers exist as well. Keep in mind, that's the ultimate goal, the lower rates for consumers, provide more for them at a lower cost. I will tell you that the city will be asking for a lot of different things as part of the negotiating process, and we will try to get as much as possible through a negotiating process. I think we have a clear track record on that, and we'll try to do our best to get everything we can for the PEG access facilities in Somerville. And it's important to point out that we have asked SCAT to do one thing, provide public access, and that's provide one channel, to provide public access as they see fit. So, when they get the funds from franchising fees or telecommunications licenses, the city puts no strings on it except that, here's the money, you operate a public access facility, and as they define themselves in the years ahead, it's clearly up to them. It's not something the city's looking to tell them what to do, it's how they want to spend their money, and how they want to define themselves, it's clearly up to people like you as members, and people like Mimi as the Executive Director, and a lot of the woodmen that are here. So, I'll tell you that we'll take those things into negotiations and do the best we can.
I'm just thinking consideration, the future goes up a little bit, so I bet they'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Goldstein, and I live at 150 First Street in Somerville, and I'm a member, a presenter of on the Board at SCAT. And you've heard a lot from SCAT tonight, so I'm not really going to say a lot, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to have a speak here this evening. And I also wanted to say that I'm glad that people spoke tonight about SCAT being an asset, and I don't know if everyone realizes that there are people that have produced at SCAT that are being recognized nationally now, and are producing films for Miramax, and have won awards at festivals all around the country, and this process, I hope that will continue to be thought of as an asset, and that when we proceed negotiations with different companies coming in, it's great that you're coming in, I think everyone's happy about the competition, but we welcome you to come to us as the negotiations are going on, and to talk about our vision as well for the community, and we have a lot of ideas about what we'd like to see happen as far as cable over the next several years. And I thank the city for its support, for going and representing us in the negotiations, but we have a lot to share with you also, and we'd love to talk to you more about our vision of the future too, and join with you in what I'm sure will be a lot of really wonderful changes in the community that we're all really excited about. Thank you very much.
My name is Matt Haberstrass, we live at 95 Conwell, work at WGBH Public Television, and I've been a member of SCAT for the last three years, and producing shows such as Somerville and community-based shows. One thing that you said, Mr. Train, is the expanded PEG, PEG may be expanded, I have one question which I don't think has been addressed, does that mean that there'll be a PEG system on RCN and on what other cable network? Does that mean there will be a couple different public access channels, and will SCAT become a poor cousin?
No, what I meant, and I want to clarify, that our intention is, as I think Mimi articulated, is to have SCAT carried on whatever system is developed in Somerville, whether it's RCN, whether it's NINX, or whether it's Simon Warner. I think my point there was that we want to provide funding, we don't want to provide management, and if Mimi sees fit to take SCAT in one direction, that's great, and if she doesn't, that's also great, but our commitment is to provide funding and to do one thing, public access, so the P in PEG, not to do educational, not to do governmental, but public access, as you, as a group, want to define it.
Can I ask a question? Does that mean that all the different competitors we have would all share the same P?
Yes, that, our intent is, if there are three stations now, to ask that all three stations be carried on whatever the system is.
Okay.
And, you know, in terms of other services that companies may provide, that's in a lot of ways a business decision for those companies, the city clearly has a vision on what it wants to do with its Internet access network that's being launched next week, but what other companies want to do is really a business decision. We encourage them to do it, and we think there's a customer base out there that will support things like Internet access and things of those nature. Is there any other?
Paul, can I ask you another question?
Sure.
I just wanted to pick up on something that I heard Scott say, and that was that they plan to pay the city 5% of their gross video revenue, and I'm wondering if there's a distinction between video revenue and, in their case, being a telephone provider, is there a distinction between telephone revenue versus video revenue? And in the case of, say, Internet access, does that fall under the telephone category or the video category? And for an organization like the Community Computing Center, would it be appropriate for the city to be collecting 5% of the telephone or other Internet access revenue to provide to an organization like that? Is there, are you making that kind of a distinction or are the plans?
I can tell you that the definition of gross revenue is something that the city will be looking at very closely. How we define gross revenue in the new era of telecommunications may be different than it has been in the past, but we are clearly not looking to let any company subsidize a build in Somerville for one service and allowing it happen elsewhere, so we're saying that we're not going to allow someone to subsidize or build a system in getting a subsidized rate for, say, telephony services, and allowing that to fund a cable build. How we define gross revenue is something that I'm sure will be a matter of lengthy discussion between Somerville and RCN, and it's something that's not lost on us, and you raise an excellent point, but as the convergence of these things come together, it's a legitimate question, it's one the city will raise, and it's one that I think, to my knowledge, no community in the country has settled yet, and it's probably going to be one of the more lengthy discussions and negotiations we have, but we're certainly not looking to give away the door. We're going to look at how we define gross revenue, and it will be something that's all about, but it is an excellent point, and one that has not been lost in Somerville, and I know in a host of other communities that are looking at this issue as well. There any other people who want to speak? Hearing none, I will just say that again, that the ability to provide public testimony is open through May 6th at 5:00 PM, and testimony can be received here at City Hall in the Communications Office from 00:05 through then, and at that point, we will officially close the public hearing process and detail the process from there. And again, if anybody has any process questions about how certain dates will be met, and how certain franchising obligations will be met, feel free to ask them as any time at City Hall, and I encourage anybody that may be here that didn't get a chance to speak to submit their thoughts, and also anybody that may watch it at home to do the same. So, with that, I will extend the public hearing process through May 6th, and encourage people to submit testimony and then this part of it. Thank you.
Great.
I think, and what happened was, with 70 hours of program, it means around 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Hi, John. How are you? I had a question. Well, Paul said the applicant.
That's part of what.
Well.
And it's different levels of here, and folks say, "Well, I can only show a program," you know, that's a lot of it. Why do I look? I'm tired. I'm sorry. 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 I'm tired.
There's my little light.
I'm not saying anything I wouldn't say, but.
Tomorrow I can drop by SCAT at lunchtime, pick up some things.
I have a drop by, pick up my old, my videos.